Why don't we get started then, Sophie?
Sounds good.
Just welcome everybody again. Thanks to everyone from the public in attendance. Thanks to everyone from each of the institutions, the presidents and their staffs that are in attendance, and thanks also for the committee members who are here today as well. We've been long-range planning in all of the committees and the board itself has been doing a lot of work, a lot of meetings, a lot of important engagement, discussion, and just want to recognize that. And thanks, thank you to everybody for being here today and continuing that work. It's really important, but it does not go unnoticed how much time and attention we're asking from those, both on the board and from the public and the institutions as well. So one thing I want to announce right at the beginning is Sean Tester is going to be joining the Long Range Planning Committee. I just saw a note from Chairwoman Dickinson on that, so we're really excited to have Sean join us. He has a strong hospital system background. He has strong roots in the Northeast Kingdom as well, so looking forward to having his perspective on the committee. And yeah, that will be an excellent addition. So today's agenda, we have, it's more informational, although we do have a couple of items that we want to take action on. One, pretty technical, and one more substantive. The technical item is approving the minutes from July 23rd. The more substantive ask is that we will be having a discussion of the chancellor's recommendations for strategic action for the current academic year, 2000 to 2001. And it'll be a discussion, it'll, we want everyone's feedback, and then ultimately, I think what we want is everyone's recognition that the Long Range Planning Committee supports the particular strategic actions that were selected for this year, given that they're achievable, they're important, and that, you know, we can get them done within the next six to eight months. So we'll be asking for that vote. And then we'll also be getting more information regarding the Select Committee on the future of public higher education in Vermont. We want to make sure the committee is well-versed in what they are exploring and discussing, ensuring that you're aware of what their timelines are and how that matches with different timelines for both the board, the different committees of the board, the legislature, the legislative process itself, the budget process. So we will also be having a discussion about timelines to make sure we're aware of each one of those individual threads, but more importantly, how they are tied into each other and impact each other in terms of timing. And then, of course, other business, and we will take comments from the public, of course, as well. So with that, I would ask folks to take a look at the minutes from July 23rd and ask if there are any edits or corrections to those minutes.
I'll move, we approve those. This is Adam.
So moved by Adam. Do we have a second?
Dylan, second.
Dylan, second from Dylan. Thank you, Dylan. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the minutes are approved, so thank you, everybody. So why don't we get right into the discussion, and I'm going to turn this portion over to Sophie, who's going to walk through the chancellor's recommendations, and I'll turn it over to you, Sophie.
Thank you so much. So this is, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we presented and the board approved the VSC's strategic priorities. We've been working in consultation, we, meaning the chancellor's office, primarily me and my senior leadership team, along with the presidents, to talk about what can we start moving forward with on these strategic priorities, because we have to be realistic, and they're all really important. We identified a lot of areas where we felt we could, we could really move the needle on some things, but we can't do everything at once. So what you have in front of you is the recommendations for strategic action for us to take in this year. The goal would be, you know, if that meets with your approval, pass that on to the full board at the upcoming meeting on the 16th of November, along at that time with the president's individual strategies for how they're going to accomplish the particular items. So it may differ by institution. They will be including key performance indicators, benchmarks, and timelines. So some of these things we could start this year, we won't necessarily accomplish, you know, you'll see as we go through, there's some of them are big, long-term things we can't do in just simply a flick of a switch and make them happen this year. So that will happen at the upcoming board meeting. But this was really a document, a sort of transition document between the very big picture on the strategic priorities, what we're recommending we focus on, and then the board, the chancellor's, the, sorry, the presidents focusing on the individual actions they're planning on taking. So as part of this, I did want to emphasize all the things that we are doing, we're doing in the chancellor's office from, at a system level, rather than, I mean, the presidents will be doing the pieces from their individual institutions. But we do have a number of things that are already happening this year. So you already are aware of the system-wide budget that we're working on, and we'll be hearing more about that in the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting this afternoon. That's a very significant action that will really impact a lot of other areas that we're working on. We're also going to be evaluating and working on the centralized payroll and benefit system. I think everybody knows there have been challenges with the implementation of that. We've been working extraordinarily hard to try to correct them, and there are additional efficiencies that we believe can be gained from that system, and we really need to realize the full benefit of it to benefit the colleges and provide them with what we, what we promised them we would provide them with when we implemented that. We're also going to be looking at ways to improve and streamline our accounts payable system. Right now, it's a clunky system. I don't do that many invoices, but, you know, it can be very frustrating. You get right to the very end of the form and you put in something incorrect, you have to do the whole thing all over again. We're just, there are challenges for folks that have to process a lot of invoices. So that's a business operation. We're going to be looking to see what we can do to help with that. We're also going to be looking into adopting a system-wide purchasing and procurement process. We're also going to be conducting an analysis of all the software purchases that the system has. One of the big issues that often comes up is the size of the chancellor's budget. I think one thing people don't realize often is that a significant portion of that is taken up with software costs, which obviously don't belong to the chancellor's office, they belong to the colleges. We may want to explore, is there a better way to account for that and have that, those costs transferred to the colleges' budgets, but that's a, you know, conversation for us to have. But in order to really look at our IT costs, we're going to be going through the different packages we have, you know, Colleague, Canvas, Aviso, there's a whole host of smaller ones that we all use to see, are we using them in the most efficient way? Are we getting full use out of them? Are we no longer using them? Are they things that we could stop using? So, you know, IT has been a growing cost, not just for us, obviously, but something that we should take a look at to see if there's a way to be more efficient and assess the value of those items. We'll also be launching an online website. This is connected to the fourth charge that the board gave to the chancellor and the presidents coming out of the VSCS Forward Task Force. Yasmin didn't really have an opportunity to touch base on this in the previous meeting for EPSIL, so maybe when we get through this, it might be worth having Yasmin just say a few words on that, but looking to make it easier for students to access courses across the system. Again, it ties in with the conversation that we've just had from EPSIL. We're also going to be working with primarily Castleton and Northern Vermont University on financial aid optimization. There certainly has been a lot of competition in the past, and we've, we can do a better job on that. That's something we will be looking at. And also, as was just touched on in the previous meeting, we're looking at expanding the Heartness Library model for web-based services to Castleton and to Northern Vermont University to serve as the virtual library core for the entire system. So those are things at the system level that we will be working on. And then going back to the strategic priorities that were discussed two weeks ago, the first one was affordability and reducing the total cost of attendance for students and families. So the specific items under that, that we're going to be looking to commit to for this academic year, reducing the cost of textbooks and ancillary materials for students. So for example, that could be open educational resources, but ways to help bring down costs. I know it's been a long time since I was in college, but I've heard stories of, you know, $600 science textbooks and things. It's a significant cost, and I think sometimes we don't always, when we're far removed from it, appreciate what a challenge that can be for students. Improving the on-time graduation rate, obviously, that's not something we can do very swiftly, but there are strategies that can be implemented to start moving the needle on that. And increasing average class size at residential campuses. Again, that was something that was sort of touched on in the previous meeting. We do have some, just given the nature of the programs and enrollment in programs, we are running a lot of courses with very small numbers of students in them. And some of the Select Committee materials that are available on the Joint Fiscal Office website are, you know, we'll point that out, like how very small some of our classes are. The second strategic priority was accessibility, and so we've picked two of the accessibility items that were identified in the strategic priorities. The first one is increased access to VSCS programs regardless of race, ethnicity, age, educational attainment of parents, prior educational experience, family status, or place of residence. And the commitment on this one is that we will commit to expanding access to the system programs for traditional and non-traditional students, offering flexible delivery, flexible delivery modalities such as in-person, virtual, hybrid, and flexible scheduling such as accelerated programs, evenings and weekends, to try to really broaden the students' ability to participate in the programs that we have. The other accessibility priority that we wanted to focus on was making sure that students receive the academic advising and other supports necessary to succeed in their VSCS programs as measured by their retention, persistence, and graduation. Again, that's not something you can address immediately, but we can certainly start doing things. We won't necessarily accomplish that in, you know, six to eight months, but there are ways that we can commit to improving the support services that are available to our students through expanded training on and use of Canvas, the learning management system that we have, and Aviso, the advising software across the system, as well as improved career counseling and mentorship of at-risk students. But I think there are strategies there that can be done to help on that issue. The fourth one was under the quality strategic priority, and the focus for this year would be on the ability of VSCS graduates to meet externally recognized measures of achievement, such as licensure exam success rates, and their preparation to compete in the global workforce. So one of the things that we face as a challenge is, we don't really know that much about what our graduates do and where they go and who employs them. Some institutions do a better job of that than others. VTC, I know, has, has done a very good job in terms of reaching out to their graduates, sort of within six months of graduation, and finding out what they're doing. But really, in order to make progress on this particular measure, we really need to have more information. So we're going to commit to conducting an annual survey of recent graduates and their employee, employers starting this year, but it wouldn't just be for one year. The goal would be to, to continue with that moving forward. And then the final one is the relevance priority and development of career paths that are relevant to student goals and expectations of value in a career. And the commitment on this one is that the Vermont State Colleges will expand the development of degree paths with embedded industry-recognized credentials. I understand that CCV is already doing that, VTC is looking to do that, but it's really important that we start building ways for students so that they can acquire credentials and other things. So if they don't complete a four-year degree, for example, they are leaving with something. So this would be part of that. So those were the specific recommendations that we were looking to forward to the full board. Again, there'll be more information at the full board meeting in terms of the actual strategies that individual colleges will be using to achieve those particular goals. So happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Sophie. I think, you know, we'll turn it over to questions in just one minute. And, you know, I think the, the goals and both the level of granularity, I think you've struck a good balance in terms of, you know, making them actionable and measurable. And that's always a critical and important when you're talking about strategic initiatives and plans. And, you know, for, for almost every category, there are some really, you know, articulated, you know, goals that you want to achieve. So I just want to recognize that off the top. Any board members have questions for Sophie?
Yeah, and I would just add to follow up on that, Mike. I think it is critical to have the measurement piece, because it's all well and good saying we're going to do X, but it's like, when are you going to do it? How are you going to do it? How are you going to measure whether you succeeded on it or not? And I think that's, that's really important. And again, I do want to recognize the limited bandwidth that everybody has. So we're trying to, trying to do as much as we can do, but do it in a responsible way, rather than biting off more than we can chew and then not being successful on anything.
Yeah, that's, that's a very reasonable approach, Sophie. And I think, you know, getting some momentum of making even incremental change is really going to be good for the system. So having those goals that are articulated and achievable, I think achievable being the key word this year, you know, I think that's, that's a good balance.
And I think there's an expectation from the legislature that we, that we'd be doing something, you know, that it's important that we demonstrate what we're doing and can show that we're making progress, and we are working on the transformation. So I, I think it's just vital that we be seen to be making forward progress.
Mike?
Yes, Karen.
Sophie, I just want to applaud you and, and all your support, folks. I think it's an exceptional, it's an exceptional effort, and it's a very difficult task. So all of it taken together. And the times are especially stressful. So I know that everybody's juggling lots of balls, and to see us moving forward under the current conditions, I applaud everybody. It's good work.
Well, and I do want to thank, I mean, this really is not, you know, it's, it really is a collaboration with the colleges. We've been working with the presidents. We've had a lot of conversations and discussion about what we can achieve, so trying to be considerate of what they have on their plates as well. And for those, I did just indicate, I think the Long Range Planning Committee, I see Beth's question, and she's going to be, Jen is going to be posting those materials right now, so it should be available.
Great, thanks, Sophie, and thanks, Jen. Lynn?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, to basically agree with Karen, that these are really, this is a really good start. It's a really good document. One of the questions I had on the quality piece, and I don't know exactly how that's, what the details on that are, but VSAC has been doing a survey of high school graduates a year out after they graduate. And I don't know what their methodology is or what, but they have been doing it apparently maybe every two years for years and years and years. And that might be something that we can work with them to develop that survey, or either that or through the, maybe even through the Castleton, there isn't a Castleton polling anymore, but Richard Clark is, I think that's his name, is the...
Yeah, it is. I think that was the, I think that was the anticipation. Yeah.
But instead of reinventing the wheel, we could maybe work together.
Yeah, because I think the challenge is, in order for us to find out if we're doing a good job with employers, we kind of need to know where people have gone. So, you know, having the data, I think, will be really important for us moving forward to really make progress on those particular goals that we have as strategic priorities.
Yeah, for like nursing students, it would be easy because they tickle boards, but, but yeah, for everyone else, it would certainly be helpful.
Yasmin, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, sorry, go ahead, Sophie.
I was just gonna say, if Yasmin wanted to just add something about the, because as we didn't get to, get to it in Epsil, I don't know, Yasmin, if you just wanted to add something quickly on the, the website piece.
Oh, certainly. I mean, that, that work is underway. We have a vendor selected, and we're, we're sending out a survey, I think, to students in the, in the next day or so to get their feedback on, you know, what information do they need to, or do they most care about when they're searching for courses? So that we're designing a site that meets their needs in finding more information, finding out more information about what's available to them. So that's, that's where we're at there. But I think, you know, a lot of the things that Tom and Nolan alluded to in Epsil as well are, you know, really consistent with, with the activities here. So more professional development, obviously, is also important, as an example.
Mike, Adam here. I don't know if this is where, within the agenda today, we would be talking about some of the National Center for Higher Education, their study and some of the findings that they had, assuming some of that has fed into the priorities that we're discussing right now under the chancellor's recommendation. But just trying to understand a bigger picture of the Long Range Planning Committee and our role within some of these other findings that we've read about in our packet.
Yes, I think, maybe I'll start, Sophie, and then I'll let Sophie expand on it, because, you know, I think, like, the role of the Long Range Planning Committee and what we're trying to serve in that role today is, you know, to make sure this group is at least aware of all of the different work processes and threads that are out there. There are quite a few, and it's easy to forget about one or two when there's so much else going on. So the conversation about our future as the system, you know, has certainly been broadened out, not just beyond this committee and the board, but, you know, to the legislature and to other stakeholders. So I think we will continue to play, you know, an important, you know, advisory and policy developing role as we continue to move forward on some of these transitional items. But I think there's some bigger, long-term items that need to be addressed and decided by these different work streams that are out there, and that's why we want to at least make sure the committee is aware of them and aware of what those timelines are. Sophie, anything to add on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, the, the board itself is kind of the Long Range Planning Committee, too. I mean, it's, because everyone really needs to be involved. You know, when this committee started, which was just a few years ago, it wasn't originally a standing committee of, of the board. It was because we could see the adverse headwinds that were, were coming, and it was confronting us and higher education, and particularly in the Northeast. But I think at this point, given our particular situation, really, the whole board needs to be engaged with this. But yeah, we're, we're dealing this through the Long Range Planning Committee. We have a lot of members, trustees and members of this committee, and I know we've got other trustees that are paying attention to what happens in this Long Range Planning Committee, too. So really, it's just a question of, of time. I mean, we couldn't, you know, today, we have a full day of committee meetings, but if we do, if we replicate this in its entirety at the board meeting, it just makes our board meeting so long. So we're trying to cover everything, make sure everyone has all the information that they need. We certainly heard at the last board meeting that there's interest from the trustees in understanding all the different processes that are going on and concern about the role of the Select Committee, the role of the board, what's happening at the legislature. So we're trying to bring all those threads together at this meeting today.
Yeah, and thank you for doing that. It's, it's appreciated.
Other questions from the committee?
As I see, Pat has her hand up.
Yeah, Pat, Pam Olin?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not technically part of the committee.
No, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask the presidents and even those, anyone else joining us, if they have comments after. So go ahead, Pat, please.
Well, first of all, I just really applaud these strategic priorities and particularly maximizing the benefit of those systems we've already put in place, and I think that's critically important. And then just speaking to the survey, because we do one annually six months out, and we are able to get an 85, many times 90% return because we hound our graduates. I mean, our hair services person just doesn't let them off the hook. She knows down to a name who doesn't answer the survey. So that's one of the reasons why we feel so confident in that data. And while I am a big advocate of surveying, if we really want to hang our hat on placement data, we, we're going to have to take a far more proactive approach to that, I feel, than, you know, a simple survey where you might get 15 or whatever percent return. And then my third point really relates to, you know, the help desk and Sophie's point about really trying to incorporate IT into student success and things like retention and et cetera. And, and I know Kelly Campbell is somewhere on this list of folks, and, you know, I invite her to just give me, you know, two seconds if she's able, but, I mean, we have to have a help desk, not be a fix-it is done. It really has to be services that, that integrate and incorporate with our academic programs to see where IT can really be brought home to support retention and support our students in a big way. I mean, that's Kelly's expertise. We're thrilled to have her. But I just want to drive that point home also, that, you know, we need to start getting, you know, RT is our business partner in support, but we need to take it that next level. And I don't know if you want to quickly add anything else to that, Kelly?
Thanks, Pat, and thanks, everyone. No, I think you said it well, Pat, and I think, as, you know, Sophie, you're well aware, we've chatted, I think, as we look at some of these strategic bullets and initiatives, and then I was just making notes about your well-outlined bullets of affordability and accessibility and quality and relevance. I mean, every single thing Sophie said, I think IT plays a critical role. And I think we've seen that through COVID, but wanting to ensure as we start to think about how we position and support and resource IT, that we understand the critical need, and, and I think that we're well aware that we are not just about break-fix, and we're not just about providing computers and network, right, that we need to be strategic partners and moving a lot of these critical efforts forward and truly be shifting from operational to strategy. And I think that's a priority for IT, and I think we're aware of it, but wanting to kind of name that in how we approach some of these objectives. So, thanks, Pat. Thanks, Sophie.
Yeah, no, thanks. I actually skipped over that one unintentionally when I was reading through my list here. So thank you for raising that back up, yeah. Yeah, again, I mean, I think part of what we're looking forward to, and again, we want to be realistic about how much we can handle, but we don't want to have, you know, four separate ways of doing things if we can collaborate across the system, and we have different strengths at different places. So, and I use this example all the time, but I mean, Kelly, who you just heard from, is, is really, you know, an expert on academic technology. So she's at VTC, but that would be a great asset that, you know, hopefully, we can use her knowledge and benefit from that across the system, rather than, it doesn't have to be someone centralized in the central office. We can benefit from having expertise elsewhere in the system, and that's something we need to be looking for, too.
Sophie, just to clarify, it was number three under accessibility that you didn't highlight, just for everyone's awareness?
The list of system-wide, I just skipped, I just accidentally skipped over it. It was after, I was talking about reviewing the current software, and then I went into the website, and I missed the help desk that was listed there. We're looking at, trying to, again, we haven't really gone very far down the path, but we've just started having conversations about developing a system-wide help desk, because, again, different people have different expertise across the system and help have a more robust way of supporting people longer hours, but then less stress on the individual campuses. So figuring out a way to do that in a shared way, rather than everyone individually having to man their own help desk.
And Sophie, I think it's maybe, this is more of an implementation item. So, you know, I'll just, I'll just put it out there, but on that survey piece that Pat mentioned, you know, we do say the Vermont State College System will conduct an annual survey. Maybe it's implicit that each institution will conduct their own survey in a unified way, but, but I could imagine, to Pat's point, you know, you need, you need, you know, most people are most familiar with their institution rather than the system, probably, most recent graduates, but each system might, you know, CCV might want something a little bit different than the residential colleges, if, you know, if they, if they do that kind of surveying as well. So maybe just something to think about in the implementation piece.
That makes sense. And I appreciate Pat's point, too, is, you know, nagging is always important on those kinds of things, to get good quality results.
Yeah, exactly right. It's very, I mean, the information and the data will be great, but you want to make sure that it's as complete as it can be and as solid as it can be. Any other questions or comments from the other presidents or members of the other institutions? Or any comments? I know we have a public comment later, but I'd be interested if any one that's on the meeting has any public comment or questions on these initiatives as well. Feel free to speak up, because I, oh, yeah, Beth, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I really appreciate Pat bringing up the fact that we all do send out graduate surveys. In fact, while I've been listening to you, I have been putting the labels on the postcard that says, you know, we're asking you for your input. It's a, at one point, the Castleton Polling Institute was the Castleton Polling Institute was going to take it on. And actually, the day we met to discuss it was the day that Castleton shut down the polling institute. And so we were heartbroken because we really thought this might be a way to get better response rate. The response rate has been going down, down, down. And so I really am excited to hear what you all come up with for a way to get our graduates to respond to these surveys. It's important information. We have such long, 20 years of these surveys. So the longitudinal information is great, but when you have a 13% response rate, it doesn't mean a whole lot. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point, Beth. And that, and that long, you know, that rich data set of multiple years is really valuable to see trends and where things are moving and, you know, what field people are going into. And so, well, point well taken. I'm scrolling through, but if anyone has any questions, please feel free to speak up So Sophie, just one other point I just wanted to make is that, you know, I think, you know, some of these items like under affordability, you know, reducing the cost of textbooks and associated materials with those that are public sourced or, you know, it's just like, it's really, you know, there's a small item, but it can be a really big, a big item for a student. And I think it's things like that that are really important, no brainers that we can get working on and get implemented and make some impact. So I just, I wanted to call that one out specifically because I know, I know that, you know, when you, when you think about all the costs it takes to get to higher ed, and then on top of that to get almost a surprise bill for how much your books are, it's, it can be the straw that breaks the camel's back.
I do know, I mean, CCV has done a lot of work on that. And I mean, Joyce would certainly say that there are students that when they're choosing which section to take will look to see what the cost of textbooks are. I mean, they're not, they're pretty smart in figuring out what the costs are. And I know we've had faculty, you know, I know Greg Petrick's up at NVU Johnson has, is really, you know, doing an enormous amount in this area. So it's not to suggest we don't have people doing really good on this already, but it's just something we can expand on and help improve for students. Joyce said you wanted to add anything on?
I would just say, echo what Sophie says. We, a few years ago, went to making it available. So faculty know when they order it, order their textbooks, they know what the cost is. Because I think in all fairness, I think a lot of times faculty ordered a textbook but didn't really know what the costs are. Now, faculty can find out, I mean, it's right there. You know, the price changes a little bit, but you get the ballpark. I mean, it might be, you know, 199 now, and it might be 189 when, because it's a, it's a, it's a rolling piece until they lock it in. But I think the other piece is helping students also in the end with their costs. And so I think you all know, we started a life gap endowment program. So that is oftentimes, it's those invisible barrier, you know, expenditures that get in the way. People figure out how to pay for tuition, and all of a sudden, they do have this huge textbook cost, and they run from continuing education. So I think trying to figure out on both ends, contain costs, being creative, and also are there ways that we can support students as, because there always will be some costs. So are there some ways to deal with it on both ends?
That's great. Thanks, Joyce. Any other, any other questions or comments? We'll have a broader opportunity to talk about this at the full board meeting, but what I do hope is that we can approve these as, you know, recommendations from the long-range planning committee and have them be presented at the board meeting.
That would be helpful, because then the presidents can continue their work on the strategies. If we don't know what the board's going to approve, it's harder for them to do that.
So there are any questions I'd ask for a motion from the, from the committee if we're so interested to do that at this time?
I'd like to make one comment.
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah. I think in terms of follow-up, this follow-up surveys to see where students are after they've graduated, I think we need to be thoughtful about not having somehow that conveyed as there's a judgment involved as to what is success and what is not success that, that may contribute to nature of the response that we get. If we have a certain idea, like, oh, well, if you've done this, then we've been successful and you've been successful. But if you haven't achieved this in this timeframe, people might be less likely to say what they're really doing.
Yeah, it's interesting, Bill. Maybe, maybe it's almost, you know, this qualitative, like, are you, you know, how satisfied are you with the, you know, with your, with the position or the job that you have now? Or, you know, is this the, is this the field that you want to, that you were intending to go in and that you wanted to go in? You know, and if people are able to say, yeah, you know, I was able to do what I wanted to do, and I'm enjoying it. Those are good, those are as important metrics.
When we put our breakout groups on this, I stormed some of those kinds of questions. It was much broader than, you know, some material success or your salary or whatever. It really went to, you know, are you fulfilled? Or is this what you thought you were going to get? You know, it was, it was a pretty broad, it was a brainstorm. So I'm sure the, I'm sure the, call it, the system will figure out the right questions. It was never intended to be this narrow, targeted definition.
Yeah, I'm sure there's smart people thinking about this. So, thank you.
And just to comment, just a sidebar, there's, and I won't name the person, but everybody here would know the person, pretty successful, pretty successful CEO of a major Vermont corporate entity. And you'd look at all the skill set that that person would need, drama major. And the world is filled with people who did all kinds of things, studied, studied different things and end up something that if you step back and thought about it a bit, you'd think, my God, yeah, that, those skills do relate to this. Or it led into picking up some other background with something. And that philosophy major, for example, that, and it didn't work at this time, but that's a great major for people who go into a number of things. Anyway, so I hear what you're saying, Bill, but you know, straight out of college, people aren't going to land where they're going to land ultimately in life. They're doing something that may lead, it's a step into something, but it's valuable.
Yeah, that's part of what I was thinking about as well. You got a false measurement.
Only to parents sometimes.
Joyce, you're muted.
Yes, just for the record, my undergraduate degree is in animal science. And if you'd asked me two years, three years, five years out of college, what I was doing, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been classified probably as a success story.
I think I'm saying some of the same things. By some personal projection here. Western European history.
Does some of that, does some of that get, yeah, because it's skewed toward the people who are happy and successful in their minds as a survey. But, and obviously, many, several years out, we become more wise about what we consider to be success and what we want to do. Obviously, many of us didn't do the things that we did in college. But when you hire a third-party group, or even if you created a non, it costs money, but the point is, is that you could create a, you know, like VSAC is a totally different group than we are, for instance. And they could, under their ages, we could do it. Something like that, where you get a real response, not just only the good people, the Facebook happy people.
I'll make a motion. I don't know if we're still looking for a motion.
We are. Thank you, Bill.
So Bill has moved. Do we have a second?
I think Karen's waving.
A second.
Great. Karen, thank you very much. Bill's moved. Karen's second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I have it, and the recommendations are adopted by the long-range planning committee for further recommendation to the board. So thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Sophie. So Sophie, I'll turn it back to you now to talk about the broader public committee that both Megan and Joyce have been highly involved in. And Joyce is actually the chair person of. But Sophie, why don't we turn it over to you to get that detailed information about their activities so far?
Yeah, so I've included materials in the packet, but I'll just run through quickly. So the Select Committee was created by the legislature in the first quarter transitional budget. And as, as trustee Lippert noted last time, there was an expectation that the creation of the Select Committee was also part of the decision to provide us with the bridge funding. So, you know, there is some expectation that we will be working with and alongside the Select Committee as we move forward. It was intended to assist the state of Vermont in addressing the urgent needs of the Vermont State Colleges and develop an integrated vision and plan for a high-quality, affordable, and workforce-connected future for public higher education in the state, is the specific language that it was created to do. There are 15 members. I won't read through all of them, but there, from, you know, we've got there are community business members, there's a senator, a representative, the president of VSAC, the president of UVM, trustee from UVM. We obviously have Megan as our trustee on it. There are several designees from the state administration. So there's Sarah Buxton from Workforce Development, Heather Boucher from the Agency of Education. We have Dan Daly, who's one of our faculty members at NVU Linden. We have Devon Tingle, who's a student at Vermont Tech. As mentioned, Joyce Judy, the administrator from the Vermont State College System, but she's also the chair of the committee. Myself, Megan Cluver. And then we have Jeff Weld, who is an alum and former employee as well from Castleton University. So we've, we have a number of representatives on the committee. The committee has 15. There's a steering group that has five people on it. So trustee Cluver, President Judy are on the steering group, along with Brier Alpert, who is the UVM trustee, Heather Boucher, and Sarah Buxton. And the steering group selected an external consultant to work with the Select Committee. We pay for that out of our bridge funding. It's, we didn't get to pick. It was done through, by the steering group and is managed through the Joint Fiscal Office, but it does come out of the bridge funding, the $5 million that we got in that first quarter transitional budget. So the, I've included in the materials, I'm not going to read it all out, but the charge to the committee, the external consultant that was, was selected was NCHMS, which I now know is National Center for Higher Education Management Systems. So we're not using just acronyms. And they've been working the last couple of months on this. They, they were given, when they initially submitted their proposal, the thought was it was an 18-month process. Once the committee was formed, there was an understanding that 18 months, which is what's provided for in the legislation, is really too long. And so the steering group has shortened the timelines. So right now, the first interim report by NCHMS is due December 4. The second report is due February 12, and the final report April 16. So that really condenses the timeframe in which NCHMS has to do its work. There is, and I find it very interesting, so I've included in the materials, but is the RFP that NCHMS provided, where they, they had an additional piece to the RFP, but it discusses how they propose getting all the work done within this very short timeframe. And I think that's a helpful thing. I would encourage the trustees to review it. I know there are questions about what is it the Select Committee is doing and how are they doing it? And that's really laid out in great detail in that document. So right now, the first interim report is, was scheduled to be focused on financial sustainability. But I understand from the, the RFP that it's going to be broader than that. And I think that under the RFP that they put out, they're indicating they will be, in that report, they'll be talking about back office operations of campuses that can be centralized, either at the system office or the campus within the system that has the greatest capacity to perform the functions, educational programs being delivered collaboratively, which again, we've already heard about this morning from EPSOL. And again, the back office operations, I mean, these are all things that we're looking at right now. They also are talking about local sites being maintained as student service centers, and looking at different scenarios under which the Vermont State Colleges can maintain fiscal sustainability and serve students, employers, and the state. So I believe that that first report will be beyond just the financial sustainability. And again, I know trustee Cluver and President Judy will probably have more information than I do, because I know they had a steering group committee just this week, which I haven't had a chance to watch yet. All these meetings are live-streamed, and they're available after the fact as well on YouTube. So there's, the Select Committee has been meeting approximately once a month, and the steering group, and I'm looking at you, Megan, are you meeting once a week or once every couple of weeks? I know it's more frequently than we're meeting.
We're meeting every other week, Sophie.
Okay. So I did include in the materials, there's, on the Joint Fiscal Office website, there's just general background information. Some of it, I thought, would be helpful for this committee to have by way of resources. There are active links in those materials. And then I included some of the PowerPoints that the legislature, that the NCHMS group has used to present to the Select Committee, as well as, they have a list of proposed goals and high-level observations. And then the presentation that we had at our last committee meeting, which was on October 19, they presented some summary observations at the October 19 meeting. And I did want to run through those with you. They've recognized that business as usual is not an option, nor is incremental change to the status quo. I think everyone has a concern, this is just another legislative committee, it'll do its work, it'll get put on a shelf somewhere, nothing will happen. I would like to believe that this time is different. I believe that people recognize that the status quo is not acceptable, and that this is a genuine commitment by the legislature and the state to really engage in what the future of the Vermont State Colleges and the future of public higher education in Vermont is. So that's something, you know, that I think we, we should take hope from. It's not just a legislative committee that, you know, they're going to do something and no one's going to pay any further attention to it. There are other observations where the VSC is overbuilt for its current student population, both in personnel and facilities. They say that in the face of unfavorable demographic trends, rightsizing of the Vermont State Colleges will require some combination of increasing enrollments among populations not currently being served, reducing employment and the physical footprint of the campuses. Certainly, the populations not currently being served, there's a focus on adult learners, the credentials serving the adult population and completing degrees, but also industry-recognized credentials, other things that we can be providing education on. Another observation is that neither the state's higher education policies nor institutional practices are designed to meet the needs of underserved populations, adults and low-income students. Again, that's something we're hoping to address with the strategic priorities we've been discussing. We obviously have, our student population is quite distinct from that of UVM. We do serve a lot of students that are, would traditionally be underserved by higher education. We have a lot of Pell-eligible students. We have a lot of students that come from, you know, challenging circumstances, first generation, low income, disabilities. So we do, you know, we do seek to serve those students, but evidently, there's more work we can do on that. Their fifth observation, compelling educational and political reasons exist not to close institutions, but maintaining existing locations can only be accomplished by implementing substantial changes to institutional missions and functions. Their sixth is, the VSC institution policies are designed to serve institutional needs, not students, and create barriers to student enrollment and success. So that's something I would be interested in hearing more from them in terms of what, what do they see specifically as barriers that we can address. And again, to the extent those are institutional policies, that's something we can be working with the board on. And then their final point was- And then their final point was, it's critical to identify where the leadership and the ability to marshal the political will that will be necessary to implement the Select Committee's recommendations can come from within Vermont. So I think that's the other piece is where is, where is the will going to be? You know, the legislature, the governor with, you know, internally the Board of Trustees and then, you know, other stakeholders around the state is who's going to be pushing to make sure that these recommendations, when they're made, are implemented. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I certainly would defer to trustee Cluver and to President Judy. Is there the ones that are really in the room where it's all happening right now as far as the steering group goes?
I would defer. Megan, do you want to go first?
Yeah, there's one comment I would add. And one piece where I do think this committee and this, this work will be particularly effective. We've talked quite a bit about the different efforts that are going on over the past year and the different stakeholder groups. And I'm very optimistic from the work that we've heard from this group and the work that the consultants have underway, that they are going to be able to distill the different stakeholder perspectives from those different task forces and pull together the common themes coupled when they're perceptions from the external environment and present us with a holistic picture. So I think that will be very helpful to us as a board and a system as we start to get these interim reports.
Yeah, and I should have added as well, as I do know that they will be reaching out to, I mean, they're talking to a whole variety of stakeholders, but I have been contacted about, you know, who are our union leaders, who are our chairs of faculty assemblies. I don't know where that, that is. I'm not involved in that piece of it, but my understanding is that they are reaching out to our internal stakeholders as well.
Yes, they are. And I would also say that, so NCHMS is organizing some of this, but the New England Board of Higher Education is really stepping up and helping to coordinate some of the focus groups. So if you get something from them, anybody that's listening on this, make sure you respond to it. And I know that they are doing a lot in the next couple of weeks. So they're really trying to pull together a lot of different constituencies really, really fast. In some ways, this is, you know, as they have said, under, if we weren't in a COVID environment, they would be here in Vermont for three or four days and meet with a lot of different people. On the flip side, they can do a lot of this over Zoom, which is more efficient, but sometimes the conversation is more challenging when it's a group of people who don't know each other. So, but I know that they are doing that. I also know that with some of the legislative leadership, they're trying to be really sensitive to the election. And so they are reaching out to legislative leadership, different, the governor's office, they are waiting until after Tuesday just out of respect for the, the, you know, the whole process and just waiting to make sure that people have the time they want to campaign and do that, those things, and then they will be hitting them up. But, so I know that that is underway. You know, I would also say just one other thing that I, in this, and both the committee meetings, the Select Committee and the Steering Committee are public meetings, so they're livestreamed. So this is all public. But at our last meeting, they, NCHMS talked about the six buckets that they're looking at, that they are going to be coming to the Select Committee on November 9th and making very detailed recommendations under these six buckets. And would it be helpful for me just to run through the, the six buckets? Because it gives you a flavor of what they're looking at. So, and I'm seeing Mike raise.
Yeah, that would be great, Joyce.
I will, I will take my cue from you as the chair. So the six buckets, and quickly I'll just go through. The first bucket is structure and mission. They're trying, they're, they're looking at a, at a number of ways of what would be, they will come away with some recommendations around what the system should look like, very specifically in terms of structure. The second one is administrative services. I'm really trying to come up with a plan around consolidating administrative services. And this isn't about consolidating administrative services. And I think, you know, Sophie's talked about this today. There's been a number of references to it. It's not about creating more at the central office. It's about thinking about how do you deliver the services across, across the system. I also want to just mention, as I mentioned these buckets, I think I had a conversation yesterday with Jan at Bombardier, and I think she was spot on, that I think that there's a sense of urgency. And while I think you will see the work that the board is doing right now and that the colleges are doing and that Sophie mentioned with the strategic planning, none of these are in conflict with, I think, some of the work and some of the recommendations that the NCHMS will come with. I think they may come with more force and they will give the legislature and the governor's office and this board sort of something to fall back on in terms of, no, this, this, these recommendations came from an outside entity. But I would say that, that this, that the board should not slow down their conversations for fear that something that they're doing is going to have to have consequences with, with the recommendations that come forward. And Megan, if you feel like that's not, you should, you should speak up for sure. So the third bucket, so structured mission, administrative services, program array and delivery, they are really thinking a lot about embedded credentials and building that, really thinking about credentials, degrees, and how do we make sure that people, as they come in and out of education, that they are leaving with something can come back, but they can build on, they're not in isolation. The fourth is resource allocation. They, they believe that, I think they're going to come up with a different recommendation in how the, this was my sense, they didn't specifically say this, but I think that they feel like there may be other ways to think about distributing, for example, the state appropriation. Have we thought about some of those other things? Physical space, they are really, they really understand or they feel very strongly that there's way too much physical space in the VSC. And I think they're going to come with some recommendations of how to, how to, how to address some of that. And then the final bucket is really UVM and VSC alignment. They are really thinking very strongly, coming from an outside perspective. It's always interesting when someone comes in from an outside and they've had a lot of experience in other, where they think there's some missed opportunity. And so it'll be both from, I think, an operational standpoint, but also in terms of programmatic alignment and thinking about how do we collectively better serve the state than we're doing now. So I'll stop there and I'll turn it back to Megan and see if you have some other, other things. But I thought it might be helpful for this group to hear those broader buckets.
Guys, I think that captured it very well. And I, I think one point that's really stuck out to me is that in the discussions of the committees, they very much have been aligned with the strategic priorities that we've discussed here today, the discussion in Epsil. So I think even as we all try and operate in this world where there, there's so many different moving parts, I do see them all starting to come together, at least directionally.
And Joyce or Megan, just to remind everyone that those recommendations will be ready on November 9th or they'll be presented at a meeting that's going to be on November 9th?
So they will be, so the next step is for them to present, you know, their draft through the Select Committee, because in the end, the Select Committee has to give their feedback and get behind and support it. And this is, we are, the Select Committee is meeting twice in November. The Steering Committee, I said yesterday, I wish they didn't have so many Ss, like give us a different name, but the Select Committee, Steering Committee. The Steering Committee is the small group and we, we meet every other week, but the Select Committee is the larger group that Sophie referenced. And they are, we're meeting twice in November because they are going to present to us their, their plan on November 9th for feedback. They will take that and refine their recommendations and get, give us another crack at their draft the end of November, because then it will be released to legislative leadership and the governor's office in early December. And now, and I think by then, you know, even though they'll have two more, like layers of a draft due after that, I think the December, early December meeting, early December draft is going to give us, I think, all of us collectively a fair amount of specificity, or that's what I'm hoping for. Megan, would you agree?
Yes.
And the, between December, the second draft is in April. Do I have that right?
It's mid-February.
Oh, mid-February. And between December and mid-February, that's an opportunity for, for all types of stakeholder feedback. Is that, is that the idea?
Yes. And they're also planning, after the December meeting, between December and February, you know, they will continue to make adjustments, make changes. But also their plan is to be out, I don't like this term, but this is, this is a term that's commonly used, is socializing the plan to see what needs to be adjusted, what, you know, where do they not go deep enough? Where is it, like, this is like, no, this isn't going to work, those kind of things. And at the same time, providing more detail. I think that, you know, so it's a couple of different layers because the December meeting, I mean, the December draft, you know, will have some detail, but I think that over time, and in all fairness, as they're out talking to other people, how do they get even more, more, provide more detail? That said, I also want to just caution all of us that, you know, this is happening pretty fast. And so I think that they will provide sort of the guideposts, but I think the level of detail then will, to really commit into action will be this board and the, and the colleges along with working side by side with the legislature. Because in the end, the legislature and the governor's office are going to have to find the financial wherewithal and support it. The actual doing and the implementation is going to have to happen here. So I think the critical pieces, we gotta, you know, and this is the magic, and can we make this happen? Is can this all come together and can we all come together behind us and sort of move us forward? It's a heavy lift. I recognize that. But I think we're, we're all trying to give it our all, so.
Mike?
Yeah, Karen.
First of all, I want to thank, there are, there's so many people to thank in our system and beyond, the folks that are on these committees and working so hard, not the least of which are our two contributions to this effort, three contributions to this effort. So I thank you all. I, and I've tried to follow all this and there's a lot of good thinking and, and the NCHMS in particular, I, I thought we're, we're really headed, asking the right questions. They made some very interesting and I think on target observations. And they provide dates. As a trustee, I get lost, I will admit, in the world of dates with all the committees, and this is helpful. Can anyone provide, or is it too early to provide? There is an end date when we no longer get money from anybody to keep us going. And we're living in uncertain times that could even exacerbate. I don't want to be a black bag. But I know in my little world, we plan, what if we end up like we did last year? What do we do here? How do we, so we've been thinking, and I know you folks have been thinking. Are there dates, even tentative dates, that the trustees can plan on? So that we know by this date, when we get this, and I know we're going to be doing things as we go along. But are there dates that we can tentatively put on the calendar that we know that by this date, we need to take, take some action? We have guideposts. Have you folks, this is a good question, I guess, for Sophie or, or Joyce? Do we have?
It's a, it's a perfect segue because actually our next discussion is going to be on precisely that.
Sorry.
That's okay. I don't want to jump ahead, but we, we will be discussing those momentarily. And so maybe finish this discussion and then we can get into that.
About Adam then, Lynn?
Yeah, great. Thank you. One of the things that really jumped out at me, and I thought this, I think they called the Survey of the Environment or something, the title of their study, that just really popped out at me. And I, I think I knew this from our, from just our work, but the, the statistic that 30 to 40% of our courses have less than 20 students. Really, with the way the chart showed that, and this is the, CCV is an exception to that. That really jumped out at me. And then if you go to the, the last screen where it does the sort of financial sustainability results, vitally important or necessary and unavoidable survey, that reductions in operating expenses that may impact array of programs offered at each campus has really strong support in both vitally important and necessary and unavoidable. So it seems to indicate that there's really, I think, I feel like that didn't necessarily exist in the past, the consensus that hard decisions are ahead. And that really what's driving our challenges is that we have, in my opinion, too many courses with too few students. It's not rocket science. That's not a surprise to anybody, but this data really highlights that.
And yeah, Adam, you weren't, I don't think you were part of the previous discussion for Epsil, but that, that was a big focus of what we, we had just, we talked about too. So we're happy to follow up with you on that as well.
Yeah, just, it was helpful for my thinking going forward.
Great. Thanks, Adam. How about Lynn?
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that I know, there's a concern that I've heard from people on the board here is that we are not getting enough feedback from external people. People in the communities, people in the state who would have a, there, that were a little bit too much inside the bottle, inside the bubble. And I know I was told somewhere that that's what your committees are going to do, is get some feedback from outsiders, if you haven't already. The question I have is, so how did we get access to that? Or do we have to watch it on YouTube or, or what?
Well, I think that, Lynn, I would say that they, they're doing those meetings. We, as you, you were, I know Sophie asked all of you. We all submitted stakeholders that we thought the group, they should be reaching out to, and I know they're doing that in different ways. Those are not public. Those are not, they're not live streaming those conversations. They'll be summarizing those conversations. So we certainly can get, through Sophie and Megan and I, we can provide the board with that feedback. But they are convening, their plan is, they have been doing a combination of one, of doing some individual discussions with people, but also trying to bring together very small groups of different individuals. You know, there's a number of people from the business community that, that they've been, that we've asked. You know, what I love about, I find very interesting is there are four or five people on the Select Committee that are rep, that even though, like Jeff Weld, even though he's an alum, he is a director of, I think, communications or something at Cassella. So he has a very strong business, or even though he's an alum of Castleton, he brings a business perspective. And the, the, the member of the Board of Trustees, Briar Alpert, he is, he is there representing the UVM Board of Trustees, and yet his, he has a phenomenal background. So I think that what I'm grateful to is there's five or six people on the Select Committee that don't have a higher ed background, but they have a, they bring a business perspective and they represent really important business sectors in the state. So, so yes, we're trying to go outside of the committee, but we're also, I'm pretty happy that we have a pretty diverse select group. I, one of the things, and I would be curious what Sophie and Megan think, is that even though we're on Zoom and the 15 people don't know each other, the level of engagement is, when we have these meetings, is, is, it's great. And I have to say, I'm pleasantly surprised and pleased by that, that people are very much in. Sophie or Megan, thoughts and main feedback about that?
Oh, I would say yes. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful. I tend to not say much because I feel like I'm, I'm inside. I prefer to listen and hear what everyone's saying. But yeah, the, and I would say the amount of engagement has increased with each meeting. But certainly I would say at the last meeting, I was very happy to see people speak up and, and, and discuss, you know, the topics.
And I'd say the group, it is a very diverse, a very effectively diverse group. And I think I'm also seeing folks really become more educated. And I think I'm also seeing folks really become more educated around what we do as a system and some of the challenges and opportunities. And I think that will be helpful in getting to a, a really effective long-term plan going forward.
The only other thing I would add is, one of the things I think this, that has been quite effective that NCHMs has used, is because this select committee only meet once, once a month, they are constantly at, sending out little mini surveys and questionnaires to the select committee for feedback, based on, you know, like, this is what we've heard, you know, what do you think? So it's, so even though we're only meeting once a month, there is a lot of engagement, trying to build engagement and feedback from the committee in between meetings, which I think has, has contributed to, when we have a Zoom meeting, more engagement.
One last question. Joyce and Megan, the, Adam referred to the environmental high-level observations. A lot of these are things many of us involved with this board, and maybe even involved in the legislature, a few people in the legislature are aware of these things. This is a pretty diverse group. What, how do they react to these things? And some of them are pretty obvious. But how are they responding to these interesting observations about Vermont and our education and our demographics and all of it?
You know, I would say, Lynn, it's across the board. You know, and I think what Adam just, I think there are pieces of stuff that everybody sort of knows, but some people don't know, and there's other nuggets in that data that are like, you know, I had this inkling, but now it's staring me right in the face. So I think that, I think that NCHM's approach was, we need to provide everyone with a baseline of data. And that, my hunch is that this is what they do when they work with any state, is they have to establish, okay, here's, so that everyone who's involved in this work sort of has sort of the same foundation. So I think that people, Lynn, you know, for people that are internal to this, Sophie, President Garamela at UVM, different people know this stuff, but I think others are, it's establishing a baseline that gives them, like, oh, this is really serious, and we need to do something about it. And the sta, and to move away from the status quo being acceptable.
Thank you.
Sophie, anything to add on this, or should we go to the timelines, because?
I think we should go to the timelines, because I know we're getting close to, you know, to our, to our endpoint. And then I, again, I, I want to make sure people have ti, chance to go grab something to eat and take a breather before we dive into finance and facilities, so. Yasmin's going to help me with this. We've, I, just, just to make it easier, I, I find dates easier if I can see them. So this is just, and we can share this after the meeting as well. So yeah, the next slide, Yasmin. This is just looking through, again, you know, at the last meeting that we had, I think there was a concern, and Karen just echoed it, in terms of what's happening and when, and given all these interconnected processes that are moving forward. So I just, these are really just the dates, but I just want to run through, so everyone kind of has a, a sense of, of, of what the timelines look like. So the next one. Right, so the Legislative Select Committee, these are the, the full meetings of the whole, the group of 15 that are coming up, and then when the draft reports are due. So again, you can see we're meeting approximately monthly, and when those three, those three reports are due, we will, and we've got, coming up, you'll see on a slide, but we have that December 4th, I think will be a significant date. We're hoping very much there won't be a request for an extension of that date. That's a Friday. We have a full board meeting on the 7th, which is the Monday right after that. So we won't have much chance to digest whatever comes out on the 4th, but there will be, you know, we will have a meeting after that, and I'm hoping we'll be adding some additional meetings for us as a board moving forward. So the next one, Yasmin. The other piece that's going to be critical to this, obviously, is the budget. I mean, we can have all the recommendations in the world, but if we don't know what the financial support is going to be from the state, that's in and of itself is going to dictate what we can do. If we have, you know, greater support, additional bridge funding, we can do more. If, if we don't, then what we have to do, we're going to have a much shorter timeline, going to, going to Karen's point, we're going to have a much shorter timeline in which to take action, and the action will, will need to, of necessity, be more dramatic. So this is what we're currently looking at for the state budget and the legislative process. So we have, we have to submit our request to the administration coming up November 20th. And then, you know, we, we will be working with the governor's office to hopefully be included in the, the governor's budget, and then, you know, we'll be working with legislative leaders moving forward as the budget proceeds. We're trying to, you know, we are already working on that and laying the groundwork now. I think it's too late to wait until, you know, January. I think Bill Lippett made that point at the last meeting, that this work is already underway, and we need to be part of the conversation now that's happening over at the State House. And we are, we are doing that. The next one. So this is our current meetings that we have scheduled. So again, you can see we have the December 7th meeting, which is just the next day, business day after the report comes out. So I'm, what I would like, and we can, we can talk about this more at the, our November meeting, I would hope that we could find a time in, in January to have a board meeting. And then one in February as well, the February one to be after the, the February, the second report comes out. And then my thought is that we should have one in late April, after the final report comes out, just to make sure that we're staying on track with the select committee. And the next one. So this is, we'll be talking about this, obviously, far more this afternoon. But as far as our system budget goes, and I think this, this goes along again to the concern about timing and when decisions have to be made, we'll have an initial discussion about the FY22 budget this afternoon. We're just at the very beginning of that process. We're actually early compared to where we normally are in talking about the next academic year budget. But we'll be doing, you know, first pass, second pass, budget refinement. So again, as we go through our budget process, we'll be keeping track of what's happening with the select committee and what's happening in the legislature with the budget. And I think that will help inform us as to, you know, what actions we, we may need to take and what the timelines for those would be. So these pieces all fit together as we move forward. And the next one. This just repeats what we had already talked about earlier about our strategic priorities. This is work that will be going on while we, while all those other things are happening. We will be continuing to do this work. And then I think the final slide. This was just as a placeholder, really, and, and we can discuss this further if the board would like more education on this. But depending on what decisions are made, if we're looking at reconfiguration, whether that's a consolidation of institutions, single accreditation, I mean, there are a variety of, of possibilities out there. These are other deadlines that we would need to be aware of. So the length of time that we have to make these, obviously, is going to depend on the availability of the resources we have. So again, that's the financial piece, as to how much time we would have to, to accomplish things. But just as a, and we, we sort of know this from having gone through the unification of, of Johnson and Lyndon, these things take along, the, the other pieces, the external pieces take time. So any significant change, technically called a substantive change, would have to be prepared. That doesn't happen quickly. And we would then submit the substantive change proposal to NETI, which is our, the New England Commission on Higher Education, which is our regional accreditor. Then NETI has to go through their review and approval process. Depends on timing of when you get a substantive change proposal, and they meet a certain number of times a year. And then the other piece is the Department of Education approval. If we're changing the institution, so for example, as we did with Johnson and Lyndon, you have to get approval from the Department of Education in order to get financial aid. And obviously, financial aid is, is the lifeblood of our institutions. If we don't have access to financial aid, we, we're not going to be able to function at all. So that's the other piece to remember, is that the, the Department of Education approval, it takes some time, but it has to be timed to coincide with the start of the financial aid year. So the, that, that isn't a floating time through the year. That's, that has to be done sort of in the spring to make sure that we are, we're ready to issue financial aid for whatever a new institution or a new, you know, entity would look like as of July 1st. So those, I just wanted to share with you, and again, we're happy to provide further education to the board if there's interest as we move, I mean, I anticipate there would be as we move forward. If we start getting into those kinds of discussions, would be to, you know, reach out and have, you know, someone come in to sort of talk about what, what those pieces look like in greater detail. Thanks, Yasmin. Any questions on the timelines? And again, I will, we'll share that with, with all of you. I just, we've been kind of working on it, so we didn't have it in the original board materials.
We will get a copy of these.
Yes, I'll, I'll send that to you, and we'll add it to the board materials that were posted, but we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and add that in.
Thanks.
Yes, Bill.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Well, thank you. I, I would also just ask, is there, when we talked about like, some kind of Gantt chart or something along the lines of that, to the degree that the various schedules of meetings for the select committee, the board, et cetera, if they could be merged into one single document that shows, okay, this is when this, this, this is how these fit together. I mean, just rather than having to kind of like,
Well, we did.
This is very helpful, but, but that would be my, that would be my desire, and I'd.
So Yasmin did do a beautiful Gantt chart, but it just seemed like it was really hard to display that. But we will.
Even if it was just a chronological listing of everything you just added, but just put them, you know, just colored differentiated or something.
We will, we will work on that.
These are board of directors, these are select committees, these are just the.
We'll work on that. It just, this was the kind of the easier way to make it more understandable in the moment.
That's great. Couple other comment, quick, quick comment. If there's any type of recommendation that requires statutory change, not just financial money, financial appropriation, but there could be something that requires actually statutory change. I think that has not been, I mean, that was, that's been mentioned somewhere along the way, but I think it needs to be put on our radar, so that if in fact the underlying statute needs some modification, that should be thought about and put into some kind of timeframe as well.
I think that was, I mean.
Maybe that's reflected, I just didn't pick up on it.
Well, no, no, it wasn't reflected on that per se, but I think what President Judy just indicated was that one of the buckets that would be discussed in that, the December 4th report included that aspect of it. So I, I think that if, if that's the case, if they're going to be making a recommendation that would require legislative attention, we, presumably, we will know that by early December, because otherwise, it's going to be out of the, the cycle in order to get addressed at this upcoming legislative session.
Right. Just needs to be reflected in the timeframe.
Okay.
There's certain things that, again, as, as you've done well with the financial time running, timeline. There would be stakeholder process inside the building, so to speak, which we don't go inside anymore, but, you know, as to how that would transpire.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks, Bill.
This is just such a monumental effort, in my view, to involve everyone who wants to be involved on a variety of fronts, and to get expertise, professional expertise. It's objective. So I, I think it's a great effort, and I think it's a necessary effort, and I think it's going to lead to credibility. And to, it'll enhance the ability to put this out to Vermonters. There will be change, and, and there may be people who aren't happy, but at, at least they will be presented with a rationale for whatever changes are, are put forward. So I feel good about this. And again, I'm grateful. You folks are working so hard, above and beyond.
All right, well, I think that's, yeah.
And Billy, Bill, the legislators work until October of 2021 again, so we have plenty of time, right?
We don't, we don't plan to. And we're contributing our services now. Continuing to contribute our services.
Any other, any other questions on the timeline? I think that's a good idea, though, to get it in one unified document, so we can see how they line up. And, and Sophie, I think the timeline that we have control over, the board meetings and whatnot, that makes sense in terms of the timing, you know, when we need to, when we need to have those group, group meetings. Well, then why don't we go to any other business?
Lunch.
Yeah, so why don't we, any public comment then? And if there is, please also speak up, because I, I don't have everyone on my screen. But seeing and hearing none. So Sophie, do we need to vote to adjourn, or can we just adjourn?
I think, I think, I don't think anyone's going to object.
So why don't we, are those in favor of adjourning? I think I heard a lot of muted eyes.